All right, we're gonna start the meeting in ten.
Good evening. The Thursday, June 12th, 2025 meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Staff, please call the role.
Commissioner Funke.
Aye.
Commissioner Gooding.
Present.
Commissioner Lau is absent. Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seisong.
Here. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. New business. Tonight, we will be taking public comment on the draft environmental impact report for the Brisbane Baylands specific plan, specific plan number 2021-SP-01 and environmental review 2021-ER-001. Sunquest Properties Inc. and Baylands Development Inc. are the applicant and owners. Staff, may we have the presentation?
Yes, thank you. We joined tonight by Terry Avila of ESA, the consultant who prepared the EIR for the city. But I'll go ahead and kick off the presentation and turn it over to Terry. Next slide, please. So again, as the chair indicated, the city has published a draft EIR for the Brisbane Baylands specific plan project. The EIR was released in April of this year. The public comment period ends in September, September 2nd of 2025. So that period of time, the public can offer their written comments. On the EIR, the city and the consultant team will respond in writing to any environmental issues raised in those comments. So again, that's the basic process. For tonight's meeting, just a reminder, it is focused solely on taking testimony on the environmental impact report. There's gonna be no discussion of the project itself, the merits of the specific plan. There'll be no discussion of the plan itself, other than a brief overview. There won't be any questions being responded to tonight on anything that's brought up tonight, any comments would go into the record. Anything related to the specific plan, we would encourage members of the audience to hold those comments to the proper, appropriate hearing. There will be a number of hearings before the Planning Commission. Once the environmental document is completed, then the public will have the opportunity to make comments on the specific plan, the project itself, to the Planning Commission. So with that caveat, I'll walk through the agenda real quickly. Terry from ESA will provide a quick overview of sort of SEQA, as well as of the project that was evaluated in the EIR. She'll touch on some of the high-level sort of conclusions and information from the EIR. And again, we'll just put another slide that at the end that reminds people how they can comment on the EIR. So with that, I'll turn it over to the next slide and turn it over to Terry.
Great. Thank you, John, and I'm happy to be here. So let me start with an overview of SEQA. If you could go to the next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide yet another opportunity to comment on the draft EIR during this environmental review process. And the focus of the comments should be on significant environmental issues. And as John mentioned, no action is being taken tonight by the commission, nor are we responding to comments, but merely accepting comments that will be ultimately included, whether they are written or verbal tonight in the final EIR. Next slide, please. So here is the SEQA review process. And to kind of focus on it, the purpose of an EIR is to both inform decision-makers and the public about potential significant environmental effects of this project, as well as how those impacts could be avoided, reduced, or otherwise mitigated. The process began with issuance of a notice of preparation, which indicates that a draft EIR will be prepared. And that process also had a public comment period, as well as a scoping meeting where comments could be provided. There was a second notice of preparation prepared due to some changes in the project, which also included a public notice period and a scoping meeting. And we are, where you see in the green box on this slide, the required public review period under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, is 45 days, but the city has elected to provide an extended public review period, in this case, 151 days, to allow for public comment. It began on April 3rd and will conclude at 5:00 PM on September 2nd of this year. And then, moving forward, there will be more opportunities for public involvement as it moves forward to the public hearing process with the Planning Commission, who will consider the project and the draft environmental impact report and make a recommendation to City Council, who will then also hear both the draft EIR and the project, and ultimately make a decision as to certification and/or approval. And during both of those hearing processes, there will be yet another opportunity or opportunities for public comment. Next slide, please. So an EIR is, you know, basically a study of both the potential direct and indirect effects of a project, in this case, this project, on the physical environment. And as I mentioned previously, it's to inform decision-makers of public community agencies of the impacts and ways they could be reduced or mitigated. And the scope of the EIR, and there's a slide coming up that will go into more detail, includes not only the impacts of the project, but as well what are alternatives to the project? What are cumulative impacts, meaning the project combined with reasonably foreseeable other projects? Growth-inducing impacts and any significant irreversible environmental changes? Next slide. So now getting into the project. Moving on. So the project, obviously, is located in the city of Brisbane, in San Mateo County. And it is roughly located in the eastern portion of the city on about 680 acres. And of those 680 acres, about 558 are land area, and about 122 or so are the existing lagoon, as this figure shows. There are existing uses that will remain, including the Rynecology Site, Golden State Lumber, the Kinder Morgan Tank Farm, the City Corporation Yard, the Machinery and Equipment Company, and the existing Brisbane Fire Department Station, and kind of more on the fire station later. The project proposes approximately, well, it proposes 2,200 residential units, 6.5 million square feet of commercial, office, retail, conference, life science, and office campus uses, a 500,000-square-foot hotel property, which would be about 800 rooms, a middle school, the required infrastructure to support the project, as well as sustainable infrastructure uses, including a water recycling facility, water storage, a switching substation, battery storage, and a solar farm, as well as about 157 acres devoted to conservation, restoration, and enhancement uses, as well as, you know, active and passive parks and recreational improvements, including, you know, trails and the like. In addition to the uses identified in the specific plan, there are other proposed components that are not included in the specific plan, but are related to specific plan implementation. And as a result, they have been described in the EIR as project description and evaluated in the EIR. And those include provision of water supply, so establishing the California Water Service Company, or CalWater, as the service agency for the Baylands, Sierra Point, and Beatty subareas of the city. Reconfiguration of Bay Shore Boulevard from four lanes, two in each direction, to two lanes, one in each direction, along with turn lanes, a trail, and bus turnouts. And this is also referred to as the Bay Shore Mobility Plan. Relocation of the existing fire station, which will, and then conversion of that station for use as a training facility, and establishment of a new station within the Baylands. And then, construction, as I previously mentioned, of a middle school, and conversion of the existing Bay Shore School to an elementary school. There are a number of approvals, and I'm highlighting, you know, the key approvals. They're not the subject of tonight's meeting, but those are: An amendment to the general plan, land use and circulation elements. Adoption of the specific plan itself, which will require a change of zone, as well as amendments to the Brisbane Municipal Code, and approval of a development agreement. And now to the draft EIR. The draft EIR contents are identified by SEQA, and the highlights are provided here. The additional chapter is a fact sheet, which is really just kind of a summary of the project description to, you know, provide the reader with a, you know, just a quick highlight of what the project is. Next slide. SEQA requires 19 topics to be evaluated, and they don't always have to be evaluated in an EIR. They can be scoped out in an NOP. But in this case, all 19 topics have been evaluated in the draft EIR, and they are identified here. So the draft EIR requires a conclusion as to the significance of an environmental impact. And that could be no impact, it could be less than significant, either with or without mitigation, or it can be significant and unavoidable. And significant and unavoidable could be even with all feasible mitigation measures. So I'm gonna start with the significant and unavoidable impacts. And the first involves air quality, which is the emission of criteria air pollutants for which the basin is currently in non-attainment. And that is looking at both construction and operation. Second, net increase in average annual greenhouse gas emissions. And that is also during construction and operation. And that is based on, you know, a fairly stringent net zero increase emission threshold. Noise. First is increase in noise due to temporary construction-related activities. Second is an increase in noise from operational activities from stationary sources. And those might be things like HVAC. It could be the water recycling facility, battery storage systems, or even special events with amplified noise. Noise also, an increase in noise levels along roadways. And in this particular case, there were 15 roadways analyzed. And in 2035, one of those roadways exceeded the threshold. And in 2043, roadways exceeded the threshold. Moving on, there are project-related hotel, residential and hotel development that is located adjacent to the Caltrain right-of-way that could expose residents and hotel guests to noise and vibration levels exceeding thresholds. But that is under cumulative conditions. And that includes not only the specific plan, but Baylands North, the Caltrain electrification project, and the high-speed rail project. Very similarly, vibration-generating construction activities caused by pile driving. But again, it is cumulative and includes the specific plan, Baylands North, Caltrain electrification, and high-speed rail. Again, a cumulative impact. And then lastly, also cumulative, the city's library was designed to accommodate population growth associated with residential build-out of the general plan. But it did not include residential growth with the Baylands specific plan, which would cause an increase in demand for new or expanded library facilities. Again, under cumulative conditions. So those were the significant and unavoidable impacts, and those were by impact statement. There are a number of topics that resulted in no impacts or less than significant impacts with or without mitigation. And these are the broad categories, but again, there are impact statements under each of them. So quite a number that resulted in no impacts or less than significant impacts. SEQA also requires that we look at alternatives. One of the requirements is the no-project alternative. And we evaluated both the no-project, no-build alternative, which means nothing would be developed on the project site. We also looked at the no-project general plan build-out alternative, which assumes development of the Baylands would occur, but would not require any amendments to the general plan. And then, we also looked at different alternatives that include the same land use plan, but in different configurations and locations. So same land use plan, but different configurations and locations. And then, we also looked at reduced-density alternatives, where the land use plan was reduced in its overall development scale. So going, a total of nine. SEQA also requires that the EIR identifies the environmentally superior alternative. And in this case, it was alternative seven. It was in that third category of reduced density. And in this case, it was both reduced density and reduced maximum building heights. But even with this alternative, the significant and unavoidable impacts I described a few slides earlier, related to air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise, would be less, but still not reduced to a less than significant level, even with the application of feasible mitigation measures. So now on to the public review and comment period.
Okay, thank you, Cherry.
Oh, I think there's, there are a few more slides, but I'm happy to see the floor if you'd prefer.
Oh, no, no, continue, please.
Okay, gladly. As John mentioned, the public review period is April 3rd to September 2nd at 5:00 PM, 151 days. If anyone would like to see a hard copy of the draft EIR, it is available at the planning counter, it is available at the library, it is available online. I believe there are also, there may be CDs available at the planning counter. Next slide. If you'd like to submit written comments, you may do it via email to the address that is highlighted in orange on this slide. Or you may mail comments to the address identified here. And again, any comments on significant environmental issues will be responded to in writing in the final EIR. Next slide. And then, tonight, and I might need staff's help as I'm saying this.
Terry, we can, we can go ahead and the chair can handle the, these instructions right here.
Great, that would be lovely.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
You're very welcome.
Okay, before I open it up for public comments, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
No.
Nope, okay. Okay, so we'll now open it up for, to hear from the public. We'll take in-person comments first, followed by any remotely. If you would like to speak, please fill out a form and hand it to staff. Each person will have, John, what do you think, five minutes?
You may want to just poll the audience and see who wants to speak, and you can determine.
Okay, well, I have about, I think, five or six here. Can you raise your hand if you would like to speak tonight? So, yeah, I think five minutes. Okay, so each person will have five minutes to speak. A timer will be displayed, a green light followed by a yellow light, and finally, a red light when time is up. If you find that you exceed your time, please wrap up your thoughts so that we can hear from everyone. You can always follow up with written comments later. Again, please focus your comments on the draft EIR, not on the project itself. Okay, we will start with Nancy Laxmana.
Thank you, commissioners, I'll take that to heart. I did drop off my comments that there are some more general comments, but I will not read those. I will stick to the EIR, as you suggested. I'm a Brisbane resident, I was a member of the Yes on JJ Committee eight years ago. And I'm truly in, after reading through quite a bit of the EIR most of today, everything that I saw and have seen in the EIR so far has met the points that we pushed for. And measure JJ did pass with the voters' support, 55-45. But in speaking specifically to some of these significant issues that are of concern, I traveled down to King Street in San Francisco, you have a Caltrain station dead-adding there. You have lots and lots of apartment buildings there. And there are ways to mitigate it, and that does not seem to be a noise issue for those people for the continual noise situation. I do understand people have different tolerance levels on noise, so for building, I totally understand it. But as said, it will be a temporary sort of thing. I do believe with our winds, we do get a cross-section of noise, everything from across the bay at the A's Stadium, when it was, to a concert in San Francisco, to on Trinity Road, I used to hear the Barts pulling into the station, believe it or not, in one of the above-ground stations. So at different times, you hear different things. And I do know that when they were building quite a bit in South City, we did hear that continual power, you know, thing. But I believe, in the long run, this is part of our destiny, this Baylands project. And we really need to go forward with, and we have to be very time-sensitive to the fact that we've committed to these housing in our housing element. Density matters. Heightened buildings minimizing, do minimize heating bills. There will be more open space with taller buildings. Building more buildings to hit the housing agreed quota of 2,200 is not the answer. Density is better for the environment. The view element from Brisbane is a non-issue. You have to be on Humboldt or higher in Brisbane to even see past Ice House Hill. If you're on the east side of town, you're looking west, not north. So the view element, I don't believe, is an issue. So the issue of higher buildings should not force us into less open space by having more Lego buildings. Keep to the current plan, make that work. I'm also personally interested in housing affordability, transportation, and street layouts. On the housing, I hope we keep the affordability at 23% or even higher by having smaller units available for people to have their first apartment, get on the train, and get to work without driving through their workweek. This will be a huge win for those working east side of 101, where there is zero housing for that workforce. Actually, I saw you rode, riding your bike today, going up our main street there, or going up the sidewalk to Santa Clara, I think it was. They can and will bike to work. Please keep the number of 514 affordable housing units within the Baylands in the plan. The Geneva Avenue Regional Arterial caught a question of concern. That, and I have it in my notes, Chapter 3-36, referencing pictures on 3-39. On that Geneva Avenue Regional Arterial, they're saying we should have six lanes. we did hear that continual power, uh, you know, uh, thing. But I believe in the long run, this is part of our destiny, this day, this Baylands project. And we really need to go forward with, and we have to be very time-sensitive to the fact that we've committed to these housing in our housing element. Density matters. Heightened buildings minimizing, do minimize heating bills. There will be more open space with taller buildings. Building more buildings to hit the housing agreed quota of twenty-two hundred is not the answer. Density is better for the environment. The view element, element from Brisbane is a non-issue. You have to be on Humboldt or higher in Brisbane to even see past Ice House Hill. If you're on the east side of town, you're looking west, not north. So the view element, I don't believe is an issue. So the issue of higher buildings should not force us into less open space by having more Lego buildings. Keep to the current plan, make that work. I'm also personally interested in housing affordability, transportation and street layouts. On the housing, I hope we keep the affordability at twenty-three percent or even higher by having smaller units available for people to have their first apartment, get on the train and get to work without driving through their work week. This will be a huge win for those working east side of 101, where there is zero housing for that workforce. Actually saw you rolled, riding your bike today, going up, uh, our main street there, or going up the sidewalk to, uh, Santa Clara, I think it was. Um, they can and will bike to work. Please keep the number of five hundred and fourteen affordable housing units within the Baylands in the plan. The Geneva Avenue Regional Arterial caught a question of concern. That, and I have it in my notes, chapter three dash thirty-six, referencing pictures on three dash thirty-nine. On that Geneva Avenue Regional Arterial, they're saying we should have six lanes, bus one, car two lanes on either side. And then when it gets to the freeway, on-ramp, uh, Arterial Street, Sierra Point Parkway, it becomes one lane each side. Seems like the central part of the Geneva Avenue should remain two plus two. Buses can be in the same lane as cars, just like on the bridge. Where are the buses going? They're getting to the freeway and they will get their free lane. No sense making it a freeway-ish road to merge onto a single road. So I think that six-lane Geneva crossover is, uh, a little bit overkill. Also, on the Sierra Point Parkway, it says, says there will be a shared-use area for bikers and walkers. I would recommend to keep walkers on the inner Bayland side and bikers on the bayside versus a shared-use area. For bikers not having, um, what I was concerned about is Campus Road, Visitation Creek North and South, looks like it's a cut-through back to Sierra Point. You wouldn't want to have bikers having to stop at each, each corner in case, uh, cars are beginning to merge. So I think bikers should be closer to the bay. I'm also, as I said earlier, very concerned about the timeframe of this review process. There can be no delays. We must, now I repeat this, we must keep our housing element deadline in mind, which I believe is early twenty-twenty-six. And I believe that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Armando Murillo? Okay, thank you. Nels Delander?
Good evening, Chair, com- Commissioners and City Staff. I understand this is about the EIR, but I'd like to have this on the record. My name is Nels Delander and I'm a representative of Carbers Local Two Seventeen of Samatail County. We would like to have the support of the, we would like to have the support of this development, but as of right now, we do not have a solid agreement for the Brisbane portion of the project from the developer. We would like to continue the conversation with the CEO of Baylands, so this development can be a project we can fully support. To have our support, we would like to have this development use a responsible general contractor that provides healthcare for the workers. Requires contractors from, use apprenticeship, uh, apprentices from state-approved apprenticeship programs, and also provides livable wages for workers building this development. It is necessary that the workers have access to healthcare, especially if the worker construction is not the safest field to work in. If accidents happen, it is so important for workers to have access to the care they need so they can stay healthy and be able to provide for their families. By having contractors that utilize apprentices from state-approved apprenticeship programs, you're not only getting professional work with properly-trained workers, but you're also maximizing safety on this development. It is also equally important that workers get a livable wage. These workers deserve to be paid correctly for the hard work they put in day in, day out. With good wages, you're giving them a fair chance of life to be able to take care of themselves and their families. We're hoping we can have an agreement with the developer soon, so we can fully support this project. I'm hopes we can work together on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michelle Salmon?
I'm not sure if I'm strong enough. I'm not sure if I'm strong enough to lift even one volume of this anymore. Um, there's no doubt that this will eventually, well, I don't know if there's no doubt, but this will eventually get built. But I want to make sure that we build something that is the best possible thing that we can build both for the people that would be living and working there and for the city of Brisbane, and that it doesn't break the bank. Um, there's a lot more reading than I need to do, like, a lot more. But I just want to remind people that we need to fulfill all of the conditions of Measure JJ, which passed. And, um, item H on Me- Measure JJ was, "Key habitat areas, including Ice House Hill and Brisbane Lagoon, and adjacent habitat as identified in the two thousand and one City Open Space Master Plan, shall be preserved, enhanced and protected." One of the things that we've had a discussion about recently is the definition of open space versus open area. And so I went to the two thousand and one plan that was published and is mentioned in the thing. And I want to read to you the definition of open space and open area, so they're all very clear of what Brisbane's definitions of these are. Section six, five, five, six, zero of Title VII of the California Government Code defines open space as "any parcel of land or water that is essentially unimproved and devoted to an open space use for purposes of, one, the preservation of natural resources; two, the managed production of resources; three, outdoor recreation; four, public health and safety." According to the nineteen ninety-four Brisbane General Plan, the term "open space" describes lands that are in public ownership, in public ownership, and essentially unimproved and dedicated or proposed to be dedicated to the public for outdoor recreation and/or conservation purposes. In contrast to open space, the General Plan on page eighty-six defines the term "open area" as "parcels of land or portions thereof primarily in private ownership that serve to soften the impacts of urban development and otherwise provide primary green areas and a feeling of openness and to the development pattern." Typical open areas include, but are not limited to, setbacks, easements that are, setbacks and easements that are landscaped or characterized by vegetation. Open areas might also include private parks and recreation areas within a private development. According to the General Plan, an open area may consist of a combination of hardscape and landscape, such as the plaza, streets, conventional sidewalks, parking lots, and similar improvements, uh, function as circulation facilities and do not qualify as open space. I just want to make sure we're really clear on that. Streets, conventional sidewalks, parking lots and similar improvements function as circulation facilities and do not qualify as open areas. Um, and then it goes on to state, you know, the open space plan contains recommendations that pertain both to open space preservation and the creation and design of open areas in conjunction with development. And I think that's really important because as I'm reading through the draft EIR, it's often referred to "open space" and "open areas", and those are two very different things. And for instance, in the plan, there's a whole area that, uh, is called the solar farm. That is not open area. That is a function that is used and it's built. And it's basically a parking lot for solar panels. So I want to make sure that in the agreements of the open space that the city of Brisbane has negotiated, uh, in terms of the overall development, is, uh, properly defined and properly used. Um, one of the things that concerns me is that some of the, there's some conflicts between things where we have open space, open area, recreational-type things that are part of the plan. And, um, one of the areas that is mentioned about being preserved is Ice House Hill as a habitat. And yet, right next to that, they want to build what's called community fields. And I think that this is not a very good idea because first of all, there's not adequate space there for decent community fields, including parking. And one of the things that is important and, and sort of a standard in Samatail County is that they usually have twenty parking spaces per field, per soc-, per, per standard-sized soccer field. There's really not room for that there. And this example, the Santa Clara Youth Soccer Park has, has a hundred-car parking lot for three fields in a building. Madera County has an ordinance that says you have, have to have a minimum of twenty spaces per field, parking spaces. And I just don't see where that's going to happen because of the, the location where you have, uh, boundaries that we can't cross over. We have railroad tracks, we have machinery and equipment, and we have, um, the railroad tunnel, and we have Bay Shore. And one of the things that concerns me is in the draft EIR, um, under community fields, "Two, two active recreation areas are proposed to provide opportunities for outdoor exercise and community sports in locations accessible from Baylands neighborhoods via bicycle or walking, as well as accessible to Brisbane residents. These areas are intended to accommodate an array of physical activities and play for all ages and abilities." And it goes on to describe the community fields. "This approximately seven-point-four-acre park includes flexible recreational irrigated turf lawn, ball-filled picnic and games areas, and amenity pavilion with restrooms, playgrounds, fitness stations, buffer plantings and shade structure. The park will be night-lighted, including lighting for active nighttime sports activities. Vehicular parking would also be provided. Pedestrian and bicycle trails will connect to the existing Crocker Trail, Ice House Hill Trail Network, Tunnel Avenue and the proposed ecological park."
Sorry, through the chair, the, the red light's not working on there, unfortunately.
Oh, it's working. Let me just finish this sentence.
The red light facing the chair then is not working.
Oh, okay. I, I just want to make the point that having lighted ballfields, uh, in, well into the night is not compatible with the habitat restri-, the habitat areas that they're trying to preserve in this, in this section with Ice House Hill and the little trail there and everything. And I think there are better uses for that. And I wanted to make sure that we also really are clear on the difference between open space and open area in this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Corey Smith?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, Corey Smith, the Executive Director of the Housing Action Coalition. Uh, we are a nonprofit that does work around the Bay Area and the state of California to support the construction of more housing at all income levels from homeless supportive housing, deed-restricted, affordable and market rate, thinking about urban infill housing, trying to make our cities work better for everybody. Uh, and I'm here to speak in support of the project, uh, but unfortunately raise some serious concerns about some of the excessive mitigation measures in the draft EIR. The Baylands is a rare opportunity to transform a six-hundred-and-eighty-four-acre former industrial site into a vibrant transit-oriented community with up to twenty-two hundred new homes, including affordable housing that's been mentioned, next to transit, Caltrain, Muni and a future BART station. And, and this project is essential for Brisbane to meet its housing element goals and do its part to help the region address our affordability and climate crises. Unfortunately, the draft EIR does include some unnecessary and ultimately costly mitigations that go well beyond what Sequel requires and could help push the project to infeasibility. Uh, this includes requiring GHG offset credits despite the project already being designed to reduce emissions, building height limits based on a flawed wall of buildings analysis, and widening Geneva Ave to six lanes, which contradicts the goal of reducing our car dependency. It also calls for noise barriers that are not actually needed under Sequel and would ultimately only increase the cost of the project. This is one of the viable areas in Brisbane, one of the few where the city can realistically accommodate its housing targets set by the regional housing needs allocation or the RINA targets. Failing to move this project forward puts the city at serious risk of falling short of its housing element commitments and could open the door to legal consequences or state intervention. So we urge the city to revise the final EIR and remove these excessive requirements. Brisbane has the chance to lead with a sustainable, equitable development. Let's not let outdated mitigations get in the way of that vision. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
Hi, good evening, Mary Rogers. I've lived in Brisbane for around thirty-eight years. Um, while I'm a big proponent of affordable housing, I am very concerned about the transportation, that, um, the congestion that this project would cause. We have the Baylands project, we have the Quarry project, we have Light Rail project, the Candlestick project, and I think there's another one. I calculated all of that, um, the number of acres under development, and it comes up to like one square mile, that's huge. These projects will not take six months or a year, it's many years. Transportation is going to be critical. Um, the roads will be congested. And I do think that Geneva needs to be widened, along with many other roads, to accommodate all the, the traffic that's going to come with the construction of these projects. So I, I'm just asking the planning, uh, commissioners to really take a deep dive into that. And for the, uh, benefit of the Brisbane residents here, I don't want to be subject to noise for the next ten years while all these developments take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, more? Okay. Okay, Greg Vilkin?
I am Greg Vilkin, I represent the Baylands. And for better or worse, I'm the founder of Baylands Development and, uh, have caused all of these issues. Um, we are delighted to, uh, be at this point. Um, Pamela, you remember, and we were here in twenty-eighteen and we worked hard to negotiate Measure JJ as a win-win for, uh, the project and for the city. It is remarkable that a city the size of Brisbane has stepped up to the region to support a project that doubles the size of the city. Um, we have not lost that, uh, support from the city. We know that this has been a, a joint effort to build a project we can all be proud of. What I will tell you is, the way the project is designed, it is the most sustainable project that we could possibly imagine. We're a hundred percent electric, we're eighty-five percent of our utilities are generated on-site through a solar field, through a utility-scale battery from solar on every rooftop, um, from limiting to eleven thousand parking spaces so that we can force change and, and a shuttle system that connects both Muni and Caltrain and comes up and through Brisbane. Um, for a project this size, it is a ten-year-plus build-out, there's no question about that. We can't hide this behind a chair. This is a huge project, in fact, it's the largest in the state of California for urban development right now. And again, we are, um, awed and, uh, are thankful for the efforts that the, you know, city has put in. And as people have said, you know, this is going to happen, it is great for the region. It will have some impacts on the local community, and we understand that. And we're going to try and limit those, uh, and solve those as much, as much as possible. We are an open book, um, that's why we've, uh, put the General Plan together. We've submitted it on the specific plan, we've tried to consider all of the issues that we've heard. We've had dozens of community meetings where we've paid attention and we've listened to what people have said. Um, the location of the ballfields was not chosen by us, for example. It was from the Parks and Open Space Meetings that it was the closest to Brisbane Central, uh, to be able to have those. So we get these issues, we want to be responsive. We view ourselves as joining the community, and so we want to be a good neighbor. So, uh, with that, I'll cede the rest of my time and thank you very much for all of the time and effort that you've put in.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Hello, um, my name is Malita, I'm a UC Davis student. I major in community and regional development. I'm also a resident of Brisbane, hence my interest in this project. I would like to show my support for this project as well as expediting the Sequel po- process as much as you guys possibly can after you guys hear public opinion in order to address, of course, our affordable housing, housing crisis in the state of California, as well as, I do, of course, have some concerns with the project, as all of us should. Um, however, I do believe that we should continue pushing forward with it. But my major concern, and I'm not a hundred percent sure this is Sequel-related, is in, uh, reference to the landfill and the fact that we are building on top of a landfill, which obviously has had some problems in the past. Um, so I would just like to ensure that the city is fully engaged with the landfill remediation process to ensure that toxins are not getting into our communities and into, uh, new residents' homes. And, yeah, that's all, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, staff, uh, anyone, um?
Yes, we have, we have some, we have some online with their hands raised. We're going to start with Larissa.
Okay.
Go ahead, Larissa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Larissa Canyada, and I'm the Marketing and Communications and Operations Manager for the Samatail County Economic Development Association, also known as SAMCITA. For over seventy years, SAMCITA has worked to work to its hands and sustain the economic prosperity of our region and its local communities, which is why I'm here to speak in support of the Baylands project. The Baylands will not only trans- bring transformative economic prosperity to Brisbane and Samatail County, but it will also create significant environmental and community benefits. By developing six-hundred-and-eighty acres of former industrial property, this project will deliver new housing units, commercial spaces- units, commercial spaces, parks, and recreation opportunities, all without disrupting natural habitats or enroaching on greenfield lands. We encourage, we recognize that analyzing a project of this size is an extraordinary effort, and we commend the city of Brisbane for their efforts. We also encourage the city to find ways to streamline the EIR process so that this long-awaited project can finally come to fruition. The Baylands is a transformative project, decades in the making. 2,200 new housing units at all levels of affordability, 20,000 jobs, 140 acres of parks, new transit connectivity, retail and commercial spaces, all powered by renewable energy. Now is the time to make this vision a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Jeremiah?
Yes, next we have Louis. Go ahead, Louis.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Louis Morante. I'm Vice President of Public Policy for the Bay Area Council. The Bay Area Council represents 350 of the region's largest employers, and I'm here tonight to express our support for both this project and for the largest alternative in the project. I was somewhat dismayed in reviewing the environmental document to read that the staff's conclusion here is that Alternative VII would have the lowest impact on the environment. We know that building housing and building jobs next to transit is our way to reduce emissions. The California Resources Board estimates that 40% of California's emissions come from transportation. Putting jobs and homes next to dense urban areas like San Francisco is our number-one strategy for reducing those emissions as a state. So building more densely, building higher, is the most climate-friendly and sustainable thing we can do. I was also dismayed to read in the analysis that the project would, in staff's estimation, produce as much carbon and require as much carbon offset as it does. It's a little bit too early for me to tell, but the project would likely result, would likely incur, excuse me, millions to tens of millions of dollars' worth of cost to mitigate the carbon staff estimates the project will produce. But that's not a reality. Again, if we don't build densely, if we don't build next to transit, if we don't build in our cities, the real alternative is that we build sprawl, or we build in Texas, or we build in Nevada. All of those options are ones that come with a much higher cost, both to emissions and to the quality of life and people in California. Building this project is important. It's a regionally important project. It's a project of statewide significance. So folks at all levels of government are keeping a close eye on the important progress you guys are making here tonight, but also on the substance of this document. I encourage the city to take a look at some of those factors and to try to work with housing proponents like myself to see where we can find projects that have lower environmental impacts, but also to recognize that building this project and building it densely, building close to transit, is a climate imperative. We cannot not do this. I think I'll cede the rest of my time and just thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, next we have David. Go ahead, David.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm David Crabbe. I'm a member of the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee. And we are a committee of Sierra Club that concentrates on land use in San Mateo County and Santa Clara County. And we follow cities up and down both of those counties in terms of what's happening with them and all the issues involved in that. And we are happy that the Speaker from Baylands is touting the sustainability features in this project. But the one elephant in the room that is not being addressed by anybody, and it's not just Brisbane, it's every city up and down the peninsula and in Santa Clara, is the jobs-housing balance. And this project, if I got my numbers right, is going to produce 20,000 jobs. And based on the rule of thumb for number of housing units per job, that translates to a need for almost 13,000 new housing units accessible to the Baylands. And you're putting in 2,200. I see there's a pretty big gap there. And what we get from every city, I'm sure you're, you'll probably get it from you as well, is that, oh, well, they'll come in from elsewhere. They'll come in from the Central Valley. They'll come in from San Francisco. San Francisco is already way behind on the housing requirements that they have, and that's just for the city themselves. Same with South San Francisco and up and down the peninsula. So the big question is, why is the city looking to approve 6.5 million square feet of office building and only 2,200 units of housing and consider that a sustainable approach to development? So I don't think I'd say much more. I think that's our basic point. And again, Brisbane's not alone, but I, it just continues and continues in every, you know, everything we see in the paper and everything in state and so on is housing shortages, housing balance, housing this, housing that. And the first thing the cities do is build far more commercial than they do housing, and the jobs-housing balance goes out the window. And that doesn't even include what we call the jobs-housing fit, which means that the people that have the jobs in the new development can afford the housing that's in the area and vice versa. So there's a lot of issues there. So anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, next we have Jordan. Go ahead, Jordan.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jordan Grimes, and I'm the State and Regional Resilience Manager with Greenbelt Alliance, an environmental organization working throughout the nine-county Bay Area on open space protection, climate resilience, and sustainable land use policy since 1958. Infill development and brownfield restoration is critical to ensuring we move to more sustainable patterns of development away from exurban sprawl and the develop, and the destruction of natural and working lands. We're excited about the Baylands project in this regard, not only for the badly needed new housing it will provide here on the peninsula, but for the model it has the potential to set for other projects. But after plumbing through the several thousand pages of the EIR, I admittedly skimmed, didn't read the, didn't read all 2,000-plus pages, we do share a number of significant concerns with the proposed mitigations. The first is the proposed building height restrictions, which would cap building heights to 12 stories throughout the project and 80 feet for residential development in order to maintain views of scenic resources. First things first, density is an environmental benefit and not an environmental harm. And these frankly arbitrary limits would force density to be redistributed in ways that make the neighborhood more expensive and less walkable. It undermines the thoughtful tiered design that places higher-density housing near the Bay Shore Caltrain Station and lower-density homes close to central Brisbane. Speaking of environmental harm, the recommendation to widen Geneva Avenue to six lanes would undoubtedly contribute to it. Major roadways like this will induce significant demand, encourage car usage, and create significant VMT and GHG emissions. It will needlessly drive up project costs and contradicts the project's clear emphasis on transit access and multimodal connectivity. And then finally, the suggestion that the project purchased greenhouse gas offset credits, which are frankly very expensive, was surprising and was very curious to understand why that would be attached to an infill housing project like this. The Baylands is already a model for climate smart planning and environmental benefits, and additional offsets don't really make sense and risk making the project financially infeasible. And lastly, I'll just say, the project not only creates badly new infill housing, but remediates 80 acres, but remediates hundreds of acres of contaminated land, provides 80 acres of revitalized wetlands, provides natural habitat restoration in areas like Ice House Hill, and a lot more. So the environmental benefits of this project to us are really unmatched, and we encourage the city to really review and reconsider some of these proposed mitigations. Thank you.
Thank you. More, Jeremiah?
I have no more with hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to speak that's here? Okay. Okay, well, then, the Commission thanks everyone for their input tonight. I just want to remind folks that the comment period will run through September 2nd at 5:00 PM. So if anyone would like to submit written comments, they can do so by mail or emailing More information on the project, the draft EIR, and how to comment on the draft EIR can be found on the city's website. All comments that have been submitted will be responded to in the final DE, the final EIR. The final EIR will be reviewed at future public hearings along with projects, planning, and entitlement applications. To be notified of future meetings, you can sign up for notifications on the city's website or write your email address down on the sign-up sheet in the foyer. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to the consent calendar. If there is any member of the public who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar, please raise your hand or call in. Jeremiah, can you set a 30-second timer? Do any of the Commissioners want to remove an item?
All right, 10 seconds has elapsed, and no one has raised their hand.
You have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Next is oral communications. If anyone wishes to address the Commission concerning items not on the agenda, please raise your hand or call in.
60 seconds has elapsed. No one has raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. Next is written communications. I don't believe we have any. Okay, old business, we have none. Next is items initiated by staff.
None this evening.
Okay, and finally, items initiated by the Commission. Is there anything any Commissioners would like to address? Okay, I have something. I would just want to follow up with staff. At the last meeting on May 8th, we asked if staff could agendize two matters. Can you give us a status on that, John?
We'll agendize the one regarding the Northeast Ridge for the July 10th meeting. Maybe refresh me on the other one, what the other one was.
It was concerning, the Commission had a question about penalties and our role when there's code violations.
Okay, we can agendize that for the 10th as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, then, that concludes our meeting for tonight, and we will adjourn until the next meeting of July 10, 2025.